Thank you and welcome to our August 14th, 2013 Board of Education meeting. We were in executive session discussing personnel matters and contractual matters. We'll start by doing the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we have a special agenda item. We have the appointment of our new board member. The board interviewed 12 candidates for the open position and we selected Joanne Cunningham. I'd like to congratulate Joanne. Guess we gotta actually take an official motion on that. Yeah, there's a resolution. First and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. Congratulations, Joanne. And Judy will administer the oath of office to you.
Okay. I solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution
That I will support the Constitution
of the United States of America
Of the United States of America
and the Constitution
and the Constitution
of the state of New York
of the state of New York
and that I will faithfully discharge
and that I will faithfully discharge
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability
the duties of the office
the duties of the office
of Member Board of Education
of Member Board of Education.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Joanne, I don't know if you wanna say anything?
No, I just wanna say a big thank you to the Board of Education for considering me and voting in the affirmative to ask me to join their ranks. I'm very happy to be here and I will pledge to work very hard on behalf of all of the residents of the town of Bethlehem.
And the board would like to, again, extend a thanks to all 13 candidates that applied and to the 12 that we interviewed. They all were uniquely qualified for the position and we would strongly encourage them to run in the future. We'll do introductions next.
Lynn Lindhart.
Joanne Cunningham.
Kate Navarro.
Tom Douglas.
Matt Downey.
Michael Cooper.
Diane Stevens.
Charmaine Rida-Singer.
Judy Keighley.
And I had forgotten to mention, we are being videotaped for the public. Access TV is on Sunday nights, I believe.
Except if you have bios, then you have to watch on the website.
Oh, okay. Next item on the agenda is item four, Approval of the Minutes. We had several meetings since the last Board of Education meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. Next, Student Senate, but I don't believe there's any Student Senate representative here in the summer, so we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, President. Downey, tonight, as of August 14th, we have a couple of announcements for the district. One of the first ones that gives me a great pleasure is a graduating member of the class of 2013 who the board has previously honored, Mr. Victor Fox, was also all over the news recently. He was running as a student who graduated from school but also playing in the New York State Amateur for the Golf Associations of New York. Victor held the lead all the way through, I believe, the last hole and was a heated competition where he did unfortunately come in as the runner-up. I do believe he qualifies for the national amateur because of the runner-up status along with the champion, but it's a great commendation for a person that was competing against a full adult field and also was very close to the winner and knew him very well through his other competitions. So it's a great honor for Victor but also a great honor for our programs and overall Bethlehem as a community. In addition, health and fitness sort of is a theme a little bit tonight, but one of the things I'd like the Board of Education to know, I believe I've let you know a little in the update, but also our middle school teacher, Fran Vincent, competed in the Ironman competition in Lake Placid, New York. This has been a goal of Fran's and what was really nice is Fran also took first in their age group and category and this was a qualifier for the International World Ironman Competition in Hawaii. So Fran will be representing New York State in regards to that competition, which I can only imagine anyone like me trying to attempt even a half of what they do. I would even say a tenth of what they do and I should get better at it. But, you know, our congratulations to Fran. I think this will be something that is honored to Bethlehem as well as the students will pay attention to it in some of our healthy lifestyles and choices. And I know there's many members of the board that have done different athletic events or personal challenges over the past year and many years, so I commend Fran as well as everybody else. One of the things that the community should understand is that effective Friday through at least temporarily Monday, our district email and district mail system will be shut down. That is not through the district, it's actually through our regional BOCs and our area regional information center will be conducting its switch over and move from their old location to the new location on 900 Waterville East Shaker Road as they switch all operations. So it will hopefully only take three days, but we need to prepare in case it is a little longer, but we wanted to make sure that the public has that information in case they experience any communication difficulties. In addition, the past couple of board meetings, we've been talking about our food service program. I'm in receipt of a letter from five parents in regards to this board's decision and choice based on my recommendation as well as my administrative team to go away from the federal lunch program at the high school only. And the letter indicates some of the points that they've made here at the previous meetings, but basically had three recommendations that they would like us to comply with or sort of endorse, which one is being that the district should consider moving to an evidence-based nutritional guidelines. In addition, two, those guidelines should be in compliance with the professional organizations, including the American Association of Pediatrics and the Institution of Medicine. And then the third one is establish a subcommittee of the Coordinated School Health Team. The members have just notified me that they could not be here tonight. However, I did express to them that I would bring this up. They have also requested that they be given an opportunity to present to the board in September. One of the things in reading this and talking to our food service professional, Mr. Paul Franchini, who is ultimately responsible for the nutritional values and operations here at the school district, is that as a superintendent and I know as a director of the food service, we always look for consultation and assistance. In their letter, although I do not know my position on their first and second point, on their third point, I think Paul or any administrator really does look for the community or constituents which they serve, assistance and help. And seeing how we're talking at the high school, I'm a firm believer that student leadership is one of the things that I've always been committed to throughout my life. And with that being acknowledged, that, you know, I agree, there should be some type of committee structure that Paul would have at his service as a consultative-based committee, not decision-making, because ultimately, the person who's responsible for the food service program is the only one that's going to bear the responsibility for the financial status of it, which would be Paul. Paul would be the decision-maker at that point in consultation with Mrs. Keigho or the district administration or the board. But I would say that I'd like to consider establishing with Paul's understanding, a committee to assist Paul in that this committee would most likely have a makeup of two coordinated school health members, of which Paul would be one of them, because it is important that he serves on that and that committee does not just address healthy nutritional standards but all healthy standards across the district as best as we can as a school district, that Paul would be one and that from that group, they would select another participant. In addition to this committee's structure, I believe the middle school parents, I mean the high school parents, are the ones that will be most dealing with the choices and the impact of this decision that we would establish with the co-presidents of the high school PTA, the membership for two memberships there, as well as, most importantly, from the students, I would go to the Student Senate because they have always shown tried and true leadership, that they would select one student from each grade level and try to get the best cross-section of students and we would challenge them and I know they'll rise to that challenge. Additionally, I would also add to that committee, one administrator from the high school and also because it deals so relevantly with the cost structures here, I would probably ask that from our business office, Ms. Keigho or a designee from her office be assigned to that committee to make sure that no matter what, we are always trying to ensure that we develop a healthy program as best possible under the guidelines that are now a little more loose for our students, families, as well as that is fiscally responsible to the bottom line, that we must not be using reserves and the district would not be supporting that. Those would be the two goals that I would challenge you with, Mr. Franchini. I know you're aware of them, so I'm not uncomfortable with saying them. In addition, I would probably suggest to the board that, seeing how there's presentations that could help, is that the board consider, if they can have just a brief discussion at the end real quick on my recommendations of this committee, that any potential presentation should probably work with that committee and group to help Mr. Franchini see some of the differences as he's already been researching and that Mr. Franchini as well as Ms. Keigho will report back to the board sometime like we've already agreed to around November, December, to see how the transition from one program to the other has started to, A, impact the operations of the building at the high school, as well as the financial position of the food service program in general. And I know there's many more reports. So in regards to that, that's what I would recommend to the board. I hope I've been honest and straightforward with the committee that wrote me the letter and also made the request and also represented that they couldn't be here tonight because of another commitment, which is certainly understandable. But I'll leave that and that right now. Ladies and gentlemen, we are gearing up for the start of a school year. We have some wonderful presentations tonight. One unfortunately is on the tax rate, but we will get through that. But I know the Lab School is here tonight. I want to thank them for coming out as well as the members of the community that have given their time, as well as our member of the press who has finally come back to our board tonight. So thank you very much and if there's any questions for me.
I didn't hear, how many high school parents are you gonna suggest for that committee?
Basically, two from the PTA and then one that wouldn't, it could be a parent from the high school or whatever, but it's a member of the Coordinated School Health Team, which Jody is the chair of that and I will ask her to make a selection from that.
Anyone else have any questions for Tom or have any comments on what he's proposing? And I think it would be a good idea to give some time for the program, the changes in the program to take hold and then be able to reassess it and have a future presentation. I don't think September's gonna be a viable time to make any type of assessment of the program or to make any changes at that point.
I agree. And if it makes sense and if it's possible, around that November time, if board members, if it would make sense for board members to be invited for a tour, I know we talked about that before, perhaps having board members go in and see how it is actually running, just let us know.
Just one second, I was just informed that, Joanne, could you type in B, C, S, D over there? I was just informed that we have just posted a food service story. Seeing how it's relevant, let me just show you a couple things. Joanne and Paul have worked on this. That will get me there? Nope. That wasn't good. Bethlehem Central, thank you. Okay. Fall will bring choices and convenience, so everybody can read that, I won't. That's basically some of our discussions. The big thing is that in that story, where can I click on it?
At the bottom.
There it is. This is a story that's just been posted, so Marcy, I wanted to direct you to that as well. But in addition, one of the things that we've asked Paul to do and I think came out of it, is we have some food pictures of what would be under the My Plate Program for the high school, which is the left column, and what Paul would be looking at as suggestions for servings under this year's program. The first picture is, I think it's, is that pineapple? I think it's like almost, for me, it's like a double portion of pineapple, a double portion of carrots, and then a sandwich with roughly about a half to a third of a chicken patty. Correct? Okay. And a milk. With, over on the other side would be what Paul would be suggesting, it would be a full chicken patty sandwich, milk, little less of a serving of fruit, a little less of a serving of the carrots, and also another starch on there, which obviously, one of the questions that the board was hearing is between serving sizes for high school students, that that's the visual side of it. Down below, then there's another one, this is the most famous one, is the number of chicken nuggets. It's really popular at the elementary, but this is the corn serving under my plate, the carrot serving under my plate, and the protein serving and the milk, where Paul, without the federal guidelines, would be able to serve this for the same value and same price for the students at the high school. When it comes to pizza, I think this is beets and onions. Beet salad. I don't know all the names of it. Sorry. I can just see them. And then I think it's mandarin oranges. And then this would be the slice of protein pizza under the My Learning, My Lunch Plate. And then here would be the new, same exact ingredients, just a larger size on the protein and so forth. So the left side would be at 3.25, right side would be at 3.25, that would be the difference from year to year. And again, each distinct meal is a little different, but one of the things that Paul has and we've talked about is throughout the year, maybe starting to make our own photo menu that also helps with quality control and assurance, but also gives parents an ideal what either a lunch would be or what the à la carte item would be. One of the big things that is to note is in this story is, no matter what, we're trying to make healthy choices and trying to make healthy options for students, whether it's with the federal program or without. The biggest thing is that with the school, in the course of a year, the school serves less than 17% of the meals that any student would ever get in the course of a year, three meals per day. So a large portion of this that we're having a discussion about, we don't necessarily have control of the obesity issue, but on top of it, we want to partner with the parents because we have tools in place. I don't think people maybe use them or are aware of them, but there is through NutriKids, which is now My Lunchbox, My School Box. Everything's my, my, my. But we have that where they can actually log in because they pay and they can track everything that's purchased. So parents can have that discussion or personal decision with their own child or students at home, as well as the district has always done restrictive items. So if a student or a family has a specific concern, they can contact Paul directly, fill out those concerns, Paul will manually enter it into the program, and that will not allow students to purchase certain items, even on certain days. We will be developing a form possibly to help expedite that and also document what people's choices are, because in the high school, we're over 50% of our students choose not to take a lunch. It's not because we don't let them, it's because the student in absolute support by their parent has signed off and said, "We agree, we want them to take another class." And these students also have to have some options because of our wonderful teachers, that they allow food in the classroom as long as there's respect and dignity towards that operation. So this story up there hopefully explains that. That just went out today as we're preparing for the beginning of the year. If anyone has any suggestions or some, you know, opportunities that they offer, recipes, please send them to Paul or us, we'll get them to them. And we'll try to do the best, but we hopefully have put this decision to parents so that they have the final say no matter what in one way or another, and we can assist them with that.
My only comment would be on the restriction, I think we need to make sure parents are aware of that. We can, Paul can put that on the system, but if another child buys something for someone and gives it to them, the school district can't assume that type of responsibility. I mean, we have to put some sort of disclaimer that, you know, we won't sell it to them if it's on there, but we're not gonna be able to prevent them from having it from some other source.
No, I think that's wise to add that on there. We try to do our best. Ultimately, a parent can always, unfortunately, I don't want to say this, but they can always pack the student's own lunch and it's a conversation with the student. Okay? Hopefully that's given the board all the information that they need at this point.
Any other questions for Tom? Thank you, Dr. Douglas.
You're welcome.
Next, we'll move to the Board of Education report. In terms of the president's report, I kind of already mentioned, you know, we have been interviewing for that position, so I have nothing else to add. Any board member who would like to add something about the, they've participated in dealing with school board issues? Lynn, you're always, you're always good for it.
I'll be quiet tonight.
Oh, wow. Can we mark that date down? I honestly don't think I've been to a meeting where you've never spoke up about something. That's good.
I have two things. One is, my daughter and I were watching the national news last night and they were talking about issues for transgendered students in San Francisco. And my daughter said to me, "Mom, this is such a non-issue in Bethlehem." And while I realize that because of who she is, that may be a very naive comment, I also want to appreciate the district, administration, and staff for creating an environment, at least in the middle school and I assume in the high school, where kids, where an eighth grader could say to me, "That's a non-issue, Emma." So I think that's something to be proud of and to be celebrated. The other thing is, I read an article on this, a very good newspaper, by the way, Lynn, the NISPA On Board magazine. I want to give this to Joanne because it has a lot of advice for new board members, but in the back, I don't know if people read this, there's an article that talks about, "To improve student achievement, we must address poverty," and it's a whole page on that one-fifth of US children are officially poor. And I just thought it was a very interesting piece and I know the Lab School was making a presentation tonight and I have been on the Board of Examiners for them before, and I just think it's a very interesting thing to reflect on as we do our own work. And I know that when students do their own projects, it sounds as if, from this statistic, that if anyone's researching student life or life of young people, that an interesting lens to put on that is, what's the impact of poverty? I was just floored when I read the article, so, and I also want to appreciate Lynn and NISPA for a very good paper. Is that mine? Was that the one with my column? No, this is by Willa Powell. Oh, I was in the last, oh, okay. I was in front of you. But the On Board, I always enjoy it every time it comes. There's obviously a very interesting article on benefits too. I know that Kate has brought it up around healthcare reform, so, and there's like a page and a half on new board member advice, so I'll give that over to Joanne.
Yeah, I think that was a very, it was nice because, and if you want, Ms. Cunningham, you can have my copy because I know they won't get it, I have it in my office. It was a nice segmented piece from a variety of different perspectives.
Yeah, it's great, it's great. I mean, the paper in general is great, so I really want to apply NISPA for putting it out. Well, I'll pass on that information. Oh, one other thing. My son participated in the tech desk.
Help desk?
The help desk. Right, they were doing that for a day and a half this week and I just want to appreciate the tech department for offering the training and offering the opportunity for students to be trained to help their peers and to help their teachers, and I think it's just a great partnership between students and the administration. And I'm very pleased that my son's participating in that, but it's also just a great opportunity, so.
And more importantly, they can help their parents with the device.
Well, that's what gave me the idea. I kept asking my son all summer to help me with the computer. I said, "Why don't you go and talk to Mr. D'Angelo?" And that's how it worked, so yes. I had spoken to a student who attended, oh gosh, I think it was the NanoSkills Science College, a program that really, when you mentioned poverty, was offered for low-income students, but there weren't enough students signing up, which was a shame, because I guess it was a great program, so then, you know, somehow they heard about it and she went and thought it was a great program. Again, you know, it's the same type of thing, introducing students to different areas of science and technology, encouraging them to specialize in those fields.
Anyone else? Thank you. All right. Move right on to the presentations. We're gonna have the tax rate first, by Judy.
Good evening, everybody. It's that time of year again when we get ready to finalize our tax rates and we work with the town and both towns to prepare the tax bills so that can get out in everybody's mailbox. So what we like to do is give the update on where the final rates are so we can update you from where we were looking at them. Whoopsie. Thank you.
I apologize, I was looking for the presentation, but it's only in PDF form, so you'll have to scroll down.
That's okay, I'll scroll down. I'm like, where'd it go? Who's touching? I didn't touch anything. A quick recap of the budget that was adopted for 1314, we had a $90.4 million budget. It's about a 2.51% spending increase for the district, although the maximum allowable tax levy limit was at 3.64%. The budget that the board adopted and the community approved set the amount of the levy increase at 3.59%. So that represents the additional amount that would be coming to the district when we collect the tax bills. The total levy of $59,231,650 is apportioned between the two communities within the Bethlehem School District. Bethlehem, having the larger number of parcels, has the larger share, close to $55 million of that tax levy, and New Scotland's is at about $4.5 million of the total. When we had estimated those rates at our public hearing in May, we projected that it would be at about $21.55 per $1,000 of taxable assessed value. Since that May date, there has been the grievance period that each of the towns go through where homeowners and businesses have the opportunity to challenge their assessments. And based on that process, we received lowered assessed values from each of the towns, Bethlehem and New Scotland. And what that has done is caused an increase of five cents more per thousand than what we had originally projected. Note that because the equalization rates, for the first time in a long time, both communities are at 100%, meaning that the assessed values are deemed to be very close to market based on the state tax and finances review of home sales. What that means in layman's terms is everybody gets the same tax rate. So that doesn't happen every day each year. There are frequently differences between the rates paid by Bethlehem or New Scotland. The final rates will be about $21.60 per thousand for both Bethlehem and New Scotland. And that's a 3.32% increase for Bethlehem and a 5.42% for New Scotland. And the reason for that, you can see last year, there were differing tax rates. Again, that was based on the equalization rates that were in effect for last year's tax bills, because New Scotland paid at a lower rate last year and they're at the same rate this year, it yields a higher percentage increase for them. This chart is just a quick summary for you so that you can see, for instance, last year, where the levy increase was 3.99% in 2012, Bethlehem taxpayers actually saw an increase of 3.97% and New Scotland's was only at .84%. So every year, those percentages are gonna vary. Some years it's more, some years it's less, it depends on whether there is an increase or decrease in the overall assessed values, and it depends on where the equalization rates are set. But it's fairly close to the 3.59, which is the levy increase. If your house has a taxable assessed value of $100,000, for Bethlehem, you'll see about a $69 increase over last year's tax bill. This is just for the Bethlehem school taxes. Remember, on that bill, you're also going to see the library taxes, which is separate. We don't cover that, that's all set by the library board. For New Scotland, because of that shifting in the equalization rates, the increase for those taxpayers would be about $111 per $100,000. This does not include any deductions on your tax bill due to the STAR exemptions. That will vary by individual homeowner depending on STAR exemptions. That will vary by individual homeowner, depending on whether you have the basic STAR exemption or the enhanced STAR exemption. If you have any other exemptions, veterans or what have you, those would not be factored into these numbers either. And that must be the end of the PDF. The tax bills will be going out around September 1st, and the payments are due by the end of September. If the payments are made by the end of September, there are no penalties that are assessed on those tax bills. If you go into October, the penalties do hit at that point. So we encourage everybody to watch their mail, and if there's any questions on the bills, let us know. Thank you.
Judy, do you know the value of the STAR exemption for Bethlehem this year?
The value is only going to be 2% higher than last year's number. That's a cap that was put into effect previously. I don't think I printed out that sheet that has the exact value. No, I don't have that with me, but it takes a reduction.
Very similar to last year.
Yeah, it's like around $35,000 is the reduction, so that times the tax rate. It's a few hundred dollars. In fact, if I look to the Highlights Newsletter, that had an estimated benefit amount. Do you have that? $601 for Bethlehem, $626 for New Scotland. That's for the basic exemption.
Value of that.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next is Facilities Project.
Yes, Mr. Nolte is out, so I've asked him to develop just a sort of executive summary, which the board has, but that's up here as well. And this will be posted to our website for the project, so that individuals can sort of keep track how we're progressing. There's been a lot of work. There's been roughly six agenda meetings over the time that we've started on this. They're roughly bi-weekly. A lot of the items there are logistics, phasing, preliminary bid packages, the project schedule, refining scope and budget information as well as task lists and goals, as well as anything else that sort of creeps up as, "Oh, well, you're supposed to do this, but there's a problem here." So the construction management firm, Greg, his team throughout operation and maintenance, as well as the architect, have been putting together these notes. And basically, with the pre-construction service, one of the things that has been happening is surveying and site preps. All that work at the buildings and the fields has been completed to give them more accurate information to base their designs off of. The drawings have been created through Ashley McGraw for the design documents that both the construction manager and the architect will be using. The big thing is that during this time, a lot of people don't realize, but there's a lot of testing, such as the asbestos and lead testing that is going on at all of our schools. And of course, this is always done and tried to be done in the most calm environment without the students there, so it doesn't impede the educational mission. So they've worked very hard on that. Their structural field investigations have already occurred to understand the existing conditions. Some of the difficulties will be trying to plan over the next two years, how we use our fields, what fields we can use and can't. And then there will be some decisions down the road that are cost impactful, such as sod versus seeding. One is much more cost-dependent than the other, but one has more time restrictions staying off of fields that are developed and so forth. So those are some discussions that, as we go forward, basically, the construction manager and Ashley McGraw will be here on September 3rd to give a formal presentation, because as the design documents, they're all being put together and being used at this point. But in summary, they are on target at this point for a mid-September submittal, which was always our goal line and plan at this point. However, the problem comes in that State Ed was operating at three months. State Ed now is starting to backlog themselves to around six months, but they still feel confident they'd be out the public bid on any project with cost estimates in the spring of 2014. We're trying to push that. We may also need the board to take some active lobbying, and if I could ask that it not be put into the newspaper, but to consider some lobbying once it's submitted to try to get our area represented at State Ed to speed up the process, because right now, the process is in a quagmire, so to speak, between $600 million in Rochester and $600 million in Syracuse, that nobody else is seeing any movement. That you would hope that if we're in Albany, maybe we could get some senior members to help us, at least get them to move forward on such a small project compared to Rochester and Syracuse. So with $20 million, it's not a small project, but compared to $1.2 billion, we're hoping that maybe they should hire somebody. That might be good to help move things along.
Well, that's what they did when there were so many projects going on a couple of years ago with the incentive. They did hire additional people, but I don't know if.
I think they've let them all go, and now there's only two people. And each one of them has a project of $600 million, so I'm hoping that we can get through that. So in general, please be prepared for, I'd say, pretty much a detailed presentation on the 3rd, because that will be gearing up, and we will get that to you as soon as possible, because they may have to do a follow-up on, I think it's the 14 days, the 17th, 18th, I think is the Wednesday, follow-up in case there's any last-minute adjustments before we submit the State Ed. So we just want to make sure everybody's on the same page. And each of those presentations will be videoed and also put onto the website as well. So that's pretty much. Any questions in regards to how we're moving right now?
Um, when will we have updates on the energy performance contract?
The energy performance, I thought that might come up. I didn't put it up there. The energy performance contract, Greg and I have a meeting. They have narrowed it down to two finalists. Those two finalists, we want to make sure that we have the technical pieces all covered between those two, and then we will be coming to the board on the September 3rd to try to set up an interview date, and then ultimately, a final selection, I would hope, no later than the first week in November. So, and that's roughly, I think, roughly, the project will total out with aid and costs of about $7 million, which would be generated through the energy savings, which would pay for it and not come from the tax base.
Thank you. You're welcome.
I think the summary's great, and I think the meetings in September will help the community understand the steps, because I know people have asked me, "Why isn't the field getting ripped up yet?" Or, "Why isn't it ...?" And having been a part of the interview with the entire board, interviewing people, understanding the process, and State Ed, we know that, but some people have asked me, "Why isn't their building, what's going on with the fields? They're not going to be ready." But it does take.
It is difficult, because what happens is, anything from start to, from conception to finish, if you know exactly where you're going and you can meet all your deadlines, is usually two to five years from conception to finish, just because of the fact you're dealing with outside sources that you have no control over, and approvals. And what happens is, you really can't start until you have the approval.
Any other questions? Thank you. And next, we'll move on to the Lab School presentation by Steve Smith.
Steve, I'll let go of it. It's all yours.
Good evening. I wanted to thank the board, and the community membership showed up to hear a little bit about the Lab School program. In the room, I think Lynn Lenhart's the only person to hear, who was here when the program was conceived in 1992. Kirsten's entering her 16th year in the program. I'm entering my 15th year in the program, but Lynn's the senior member of when it all got started. So we thought, it's been a few years since we've been down to the board to explain what the Lab School is, and some new faces, obviously, on the board may be asking what the Lab School program's all about. So we wanted to run through the PowerPoint that we, we've modified a little bit, but this is usually the PowerPoint we show to our eighth-grade families when they're considering this as a possible path. And that's how I always explain it to the eighth-grade families that night when I see them. There are so many paths to come through this high school and end up where you're going in life, and they're all terrific programs. They're all terrific paths, and we think we have one of those paths. So with that, we'll get started so we don't hold you on this summer night too long. So again, it started in 1992. It was, really, came about as a discussion down at the middle school in the faculty room. Some teachers could see the growth of this district, could see this building physically growing, extensions being put on the high schools. That was in the plant, and the plant to expand the middle school. They wanted to try to create a smaller field up here at the high school. And again, it's not for every kid. It's a program that doesn't fit for every teacher, but for those that it does, it really can turn into a small community field. Our students are very much a part of the Bethlehem High School community still, and we'll get into that a little bit later in the PowerPoint, as well as being in the Lab School. It is grades nine through 12, and the students enter the program through a lottery. After that visit down to the eighth grade, they meet with their guidance counselors at the middle school, and they throw their name in a lottery, and then the lottery is drawn. We list, this year, we had, I think, 96 students. As they come out, one through 96, we make the phone calls. We, you know, it's once we have 30, we have 30 incoming freshmen this fall. Once we have those 30, the remaining students who haven't said no, and, you know, we ultimately get a few students who put their name in and then say no when they get the phone call. But whomever's remaining, they stay on the waitlist for the next two years. They can come in as sophomores or juniors off the waitlist, and we already have a few coming this summer who have come into the program, because we have students who are moving out of the district or for other reasons, maybe leaving Lab School. These students will have the same eight teachers for all four years, so you can imagine, we really truly get to know these students inside and out, and they get to know us pretty well by the end of this experience together. One of the real foundations of this program, from the very beginning, it was important with the people that planned it. They brought parents in on the planning, and our parents are very active and very involved in the program, and it's something even our students, I think, want to have happen, which is kind of odd to think a high school student wants their parent around them, but we really do see that quite a bit. And they're very active. They have monthly meetings. They run all of our fundraisers. They attend our Board of Examiner events and really just at all of our retreats, and an important part of what I call the triangle, the parents, the students, and the teachers, that keep the Lab School going. And then finally, one of the other foundations, and we'll get into this in a later screen, was they really fought mastery of learning, of making sure a student leaves any subject with a real, true understanding of what they've learned before they move on. And again, we have another screen about that later.
Okay, so obviously, academics is extremely important in our program. So starting with science, we've taken our science program and sectioned it into two divisions, Division One and Division Two. Division One Science this year will be taught by Dave Lendrum. I believe his position hopefully will be approved later on in the meeting. It always had been taught by Rick Arquette, who unfortunately left us. But Division One Science, this is for the ninth and 10th graders. During Division One, this is when students take the Living Environment Regents exam, so they fulfill their state requirement for their science regents. Division Two Science, this is for 11th and 12th graders, and this is taught by Steve Koenis. This is a very hands-on science course over the two years. He does a lot of labs with them, a lot of experiments, that sort of thing. Mathematics is taught by myself and Tom Friss. We kind of divvy up. It's not sectioned like sciences, but basically, we teach algebra geometry, Algebra II trig, pre-calculus, and calculus. Students in the Lab School have to take math all four years. If they come into the program advanced in mathematics, they can continue on that path, and the Integrated Algebra Regents is required. We have already started to switch over to the Common Core, so this summer, I worked with, as I teach algebra, I worked with members of the math department to start switching the algebra courses over to Common Core. So we'll be giving the Common Core Algebra exam, as well as the Integrated Algebra Regents exam in June. And just to mention, all of the teachers in the program, you know, we are all members of our regular departments, so we adhere to all state mandates, Common Core mandates, as that comes up, just like other members of the department. And then all seniors have to take a health class, as that is also a state requirement for graduation. Continuing with academics, world language. Students have to take three years of a language, and they have an option of two. Spanish, taught by Mike Mitchell, or French, taught by a new teacher this year due to the retirement of Lizette Lebold, Shayna Pelletieri. So that is taught over the three years. English, all four years, is taught by Steve, and he does cover all of the required texts that are covered in the traditional school, and the Regents exam is given at the end of 11th grade, just as it is in the traditional school. Social Studies, all four years, are taught by Jason Greco. Students take the Global Regents at the end of 10th grade, the American History Regents at the end of 11th grade, and senior year, they spend the first half of the year doing participation in government, and the second half of the year doing economics. So the traditional senior curriculum. And I think these two classes, English and Social Studies, are a really good example of how, of how the community is really strengthened by having the same teachers, because the students have the same two teachers for English and Social Studies for the whole four years. And then Steve will talk about the next two.
One of the other unique aspects of our program is the requirement of community service, and that begins as a student enters the program. For ninth, 10th, and 11th grade, we require them to accrue 15 hours of community service by the end of the school year, and if they don't, there's, you know, a penalty, for lack of a better phrase. They ultimately have to double that number for the next year, so they can't get through the program without eventually doing that community service. And then the senior year, the Community Service Initiative, you know, some of your best ideas come to you when you're mowing the lawn. I was mowing the lawn, and I was like, I think our senior, they've done the 15 hours, the underclassmen. We wanted to challenge them a little bit more, and really, as they're preparing to head out into the real world at the end of that school year, we wanted them to really get a sense of how important the community is, and Joanne just talked about, the poverty thing, things. We really wanted them to see where need is, even close to home. So we came up with the Community Service Initiative, and what that requires is our seniors break into about four or five groups in September. It begins in September and ends in January, and over that course of those months, they're required to find a local charity that has need, and in that group, they have to, basically, by the end of January, raise $1,000. But it doesn't have to just be a $1,000 check they hand over. They can go, we've had students go to places like the Regional Food Bank and help them stock their shelves, painting rooms and so forth, and the equivalent of $1,000 in service to those organizations. And it's really just been a tremendous experience for us to watch them do it. The other requirement is, in January, they invite in a representative from the group. They present the gift to that organization, and they show a 10-minute documentary that kind of shows the experience from September to January that the groups went through in selecting and then pulling off the fundraisers. We had Make-A-Wish Foundation. They did talent shows. We've had every type of fundraiser, and it's really all, we, a check-in every two weeks by me, just, "Hey, you guys are making progress. Let me see your documentary," and then they just, and it's great to see them mentoring that to our underclassmen. And then the college prep and readiness, at one point, was a half-year course in the Lab School, and during staffing reduction and cuts, it kind of went away from having the point one, but we still felt it was so integral and so important to the program that we, along with the administration, decided to morph it into the early part of the English class. And so I spend the first few weeks of the school year each year with our seniors, making sure from, it runs the gamut, from, "Do you know how to get online and put in your application?" to, "Do you know how to get the financial aid information to your parents? Have you met with your school counselor?" And then the readiness part, "Are you ready to leave Bethlehem? Are you ready to meet somebody new and live with them day in and day out?" And the responsibilities from alcohol awareness and drug abuse and so forth. And it's just a really great experience to have those honest and frank discussions and guest speakers and to see the seniors with that. Also, for our seniors, another unique aspect of our program is the senior internships, which takes place in the second half of the school year. So again, if in January, they've met all their graduation requirements to that point, their teachers have to sign off and say they're passing all their courses, they've completed that Community Service Initiative, they're allowed to start their internships. And we really throw it on them. We make them find the internship. They connect with the mentor. They make the phone calls. Again, that college prep and readiness, I do some training on how to make those appropriate connections, but we don't really kind of spoon-feed them, "Here's a great person. You should go talk to them." We kind of let them find their way and feel the rejection of some things falling through sometimes. And once they're there, they establish pretty strong relationships with their mentors, and that relationship leads to a research paper that they write, and the mentor kind of mentors them along the way with the paper, a position-based paper in the field that they're doing the internship. And then ultimately, at the end of the school year, right before graduation, they're required to do a 45-minute solo presentation on the research they've done for the paper and additional to a Board of Examiner. And Dr. Douglas had an opportunity this year to see one of our seniors give his presentation. I'll invite you all to, I know I've seen you all at our banquets and at other events and our 20th anniversary, but I'd love to have, anytime our doors are open, if you'd like to see what's going on with the presentations that the students are doing.
One of the main concerns, definitely, especially for an eighth grader about to enter the high school, are the social aspects of whether or not to join the enter the high school, are the social aspects of whether or not to join the lab school. So as Steve mentioned before, you know, lab school students are still members of the traditional school, and these are some of the ways that they are still members of the traditional school. First is physical education. They're still required to take four years of phys ed, and oftentimes, those classes are with non-lab school students as they follow the regular phys ed curriculum. Electives. Their electives, basically, they meet with their guidance counselors at the end of the school year, and they fill in whatever periods they have that are free that do not conflict with lab school classes. So oftentimes, their lab school electives, or their electives, are with traditional school students. There was a time, especially when I first started, when lab school electives were just that, they were just electives with only lab school students. But again, you know, due to some budget cuts and staffing reductions, that became kind of an issue, so now they just kind of fill in their schedule where the electives can fit. They have to take seven single semester courses before they graduate, and many of our kids opt to take more if it fits in their schedule. And then lastly, the music department. We have a number of students who are very active in the music department, band, and orchestra. This is another opportunity for them to interact with non-lab school students. The music program replaces their electives, and we work very closely each year with Dave Norman to make sure that our schedule does not conflict with band and orchestra. Chorus, that is a little bit of a separate issue, that kind of basically depends on the student's schedule, but we pretty much can guarantee that they can take band and orchestra. Another really interesting feature of lab school is our enrichment day. This occurs once every two weeks, and it's an opportunity for us to step out of our routine and really focus on areas of the lab school that we feel are important. So this is a day when we almost always have what we call a community meeting. My classroom and Steve's classroom are right next door to each other, and we have a collapsible wall, so when we put the wall down, we have a really great, large meeting space. So we're able to bring all the students together and any available teachers, and when we have a community meeting, we can bring in guest speakers, we can do community building. This is a time to make community service announcements. I'll make announcements, or students will, because they do need those 15 hours. This is a good opportunity for group presentations, like the Community Service Initiative. This is where we do event or field trip planning. If there are any issues within the lab school, this is a chance for students to bring them forth, or teachers. We've had some really great discussions over the years that we can discuss with the whole group.
Academically, on our enrichment days, it's when we really have our opportunity to work on the research process with the students. This is, for our freshmen, we call it the 40-week, just exactly what it is. We don't want to throw them in as eighth graders coming into the high school and say, here's this process, you have to stand in front of a Board of Examiners, be ready by January. So instead, one of Mr. Mitchell, on these enrichment days, has a block period, two periods in a row, with our freshmen and some of our stronger seniors who've had really positive experiences with the 20 and 40 weeks over the years, will be in there with him, and they mentor the students for the full school year, and at the end of the year, they still do a paper and a presentation, it's just to really introduce them in the freshman year, so that when they're sophomores and juniors and seniors, they're ready to go. Meanwhile, while that's going on, another block period, the other teachers, we're breaking the rest of the students up into groups of 10 or 12, and we each have like two groups in there. So I'm there with 12 students, a few of the seniors mentoring those students, these sophomores and juniors, and the seniors for their internship papers, and we're, you know, all working together to brainstorm ideas, and it's a real great opportunity to work with a group, and they do that for the first 20 weeks, and then in mid-year after they've done the presentation, I know some of you have been on our Board of Examiners, they reset in February, they get a whole new group, a whole new mentor, and a whole new topic, and they start again, and then that's our June assessment, we do it again. And they'll do that twice as sophomore, twice as a junior, and then we talked about the senior internship paper presentation.
Something else we try to do on enrichment day, when the schedule allows, is offer different seminars, and these are opportunities for us to kind of step out of the box a little bit with our classes. One thing we try to do is, the day before we take our longer field trip later in the year, we'll use the seminar times to kind of prep the kids for wherever we're going. So for instance, this year, our field trip is to Washington DC. So I know Steve has a seminar on Arlington Cemetery, I have a seminar on the Holocaust Museum, so the kids know a little bit more about where they're going before they get there. The students can choose which seminar they'd like to take. The seminars can be run by the teachers, but also the students. The top slide there shows one of our graduated seniors, Sarah Fieldman, who last year ran a really great seminar on using the iPad to make movies, teaching both the teachers and the students a thing or two. It's also a really awesome time for students of all grade levels to mix together. That's a common thing we hear a lot at the end of the year. We want you to mix us more, you know, the freshmen want to get to know the juniors and the seniors, so we try to do that with our seminars. These are just some examples of various seminars that have been offered over the years. You know, there's no way we can offer all of this in one year, probably one or two of these might be run in a single school year.
And I'll just point out, the one at the bottom does run every year. When we get to Ginger Cook, and I'll talk about that in just a few moments, at the beginning of the school year, we assign a senior to each one of the freshmen, and, you know, to imagine that in the larger school, it's hard to imagine seniors are even aware of some of the freshmen sometimes. And so I know our incoming freshmen have that fear that, oh, we're going to be picked on or something, and it's quite the opposite. Last year, like, I know Lizette Lebold, she just retired, but she had tears in her eyes at Ginger Cook to watch. Our seniors were like chomping at the bit, they were all excited to get their student run over, and then each enrichment day, we do have a session where the senior checks in with the freshmen, you know, something like 40-week may be a new word to them, or Ginger Cook may be a new word to them, and so it's just to really give that student an upperclassman that they can lean on throughout the school year. Remediation, we mentioned it earlier, and remediation is our tool to get to mastery. And for me, as the English teacher, for example, I want to read a novel like The Great Gatsby and know at the end of it that the student is walking away really truly understanding all the nuances of the novel. Did they understand the symbolism of the green light at the end of the dock? And in past, before I came, you know, as an English teacher, you give the quiz, they get the question wrong, you move on because you're on to chapter four, you're on to chapter five, and the green light comes up again, but they never got it. That doesn't happen with this process. The student has an opportunity, and it's a one-shot, the way our program is set up, it's a one-shot deal. If a student gets a zero to a 54 on that first assessment, they're out, you know, that they truly weren't prepared. The numbers, we had to pick numbers, from 55 to 64, a student gets one shot to remediate it, and what we do is, I usually stamp, they have a date that they have to come meet with me by that date, go over the chapter, whatever it was we were doing, and then they revisit it with a second assessment, which is completely a new assessment. It's on the same material, but it's not the same quiz. And that grade can rise, but it can go no higher than an 80. If they had a 65 to an 89 on that first assessment, same process unfolds, but they can get no higher than a 90. And again, it's really not about the number for us, it's me wanting to make sure, or math teacher wanting to make sure, that the foundation of formulas that they're going to call on from years down the road, or, you know, a literary term that we're going to use down the road, that they understood it. And so in with that too as well, we've, the passing level in lab school is an 80%, so we've raised the bar. So a student by the end of their academic year has to have an 80 or better in each one of their classes, or they cannot move on within the lab school, and three options kick in. They can go to summer school if it were English class, and take an approved course over the summer, get an 80 or better, and then rejoin the lab school in the fall. They can transfer back into the traditional school, and their school counselor will make sure their schedule matches up to where it should be in the traditional school. Or because of scheduling conflicts, for example, our English nine class runs when our Global Ten class has, so you couldn't make up English nine because you're supposed to be in Global Ten, so your last option is to come back and repeat the entire year in lab school. I'll be honest, that hasn't happened in a long, long time, but it is an option if a family wanted to avail themselves. And finally, at open house, and very early in the year, posted in all of our classrooms, we, each one of the teachers clearly explains our remediation policies, our rules for the students, you know, what's acceptable, what's not acceptable. We always, any one of us, before we give an assignment, say, this is eligible for remediation by this date, or it's not, and so forth.
College admissions. Obviously, eighth grade parents, any parent's going to be very concerned about college admissions. So our students, in preparation for college, create two portfolios. The first is a graduation portfolio, and they start doing this their freshman year. We encourage them to set aside some of their best work from any one of their classes. We encourage them to pick work that really reflects them as a student. That can be one of their research papers, an English essay, it could be a math test that they really studied hard for, on a topic that they found challenging. It can really be anything. And then from there, senior year in the college prep class, Steve helps them put together their college portfolio. And this consists of a resume, essays, sample work, which would be three pieces of work from their graduation portfolio, narratives written by all the teachers, and a transcript. The narratives are basically short paragraphs, they're not recommendations per se, because they're really honest narratives, honest feedback of what we have seen, you know, what we basically think of the student, where we've seen them go from freshman, from being a freshman through to a senior. And we've heard really good feedback from college admissions counselors, that they really appreciate the honesty that we give in these narratives, because they're a true reflection of our feelings about the students, and it shows how much we really get to know them. I know when I first started in the program, one of the fears was that our portfolios are kind of different, so maybe colleges would be reluctant to accept our students, or they would be unsure what to do with the portfolios, but that's no longer a fear. Our students have been accepted to over 125 colleges, and the class that just graduated 2013 was offered more than $3.6 million in scholarships. And just to clarify, that's all the schools that they were accepted to, all the offers totaled $3.6 million in scholarship offers. It was a class of 24 students that graduated, 23 went on to college, and one decided to join the military.
Okay, so back to the planning phases. Early on, they decided we have, this has to be a unique and different path, and some of the paths here at school, if you're a musician, you go to NISMIA. If you're Olympic of the Mines, you've gone to DC and competed for that. For the lab school, they chose early on to do experiential learning, outside of the school, outside of the box, and so if you're a student in the lab school in any given school year, you don't go to all these places. I'll break it down for you real quickly. You do go to Capitol Rep, we see performances at Capitol Rep, we have lunch in Albany, and the nice, unique aspect of that trip is, after the performance, we are afforded an opportunity to sit with the actors and the director and have a dialogue about what we just saw. And they also send us study guides. Maggie Cahill Mansonelli, whose son is a graduate of the lab school, is also the creative director at Capitol Rep. She provides us with all the materials we need ahead of time, so that we're prepared when the students are prepared, when we're sitting in the audience, and then afterwards they have a really nice dialogue. And the other nice part is there are student matinees, so students from other school districts are there, and we're having a dialogue with them as well. So these trips are not just academic in nature, obviously, they're building this community and these strong ties that we build with the students. They're also teaching them how to behave outside of a high school, in a theater, or in a restaurant, on an airplane, and so forth. But I truly believe are important skills to walk away from as well from high school. Students also have one day, a one-day trip to New York City or the New York City region. This year, we chose, we're going to go to Hyde Park and check out the Hyde Park region, but we have done New York City and major areas down in the New York City, and that's just an up and down, one-day trip. Those are the trips that happen every year. You can see Colonial Williamsburg, Washington D.C., Boston, and Philadelphia. That's on a rotation, so if you came in as a freshman and imagined that first year you went to Colonial Williamsburg, you would just work your way through to your senior year, and by the end of your senior year, you'll have had the opportunity, as Kirsten mentioned, none of these trips are mandatory, but you'll have had the opportunity to go to all of these cities. The Key Largo trip, it takes place only for our juniors and our seniors, so it's every other year, and that takes place over midwinter break. So it's not a school, it's a school trip because it's school student, but it's not taking place during the academic time, it's a midwinter break trip, and it's an incredible experience. They start in the Keys, they work their way through the Everglades and up through Tampa. It's very science-based, they're in the water a ton, they're swimming with dolphins, dissecting sharks, swimming with manatees, it's an incredible life experience for the students. The next two retreats have been here since the very beginning, you're going back 20 years. The Ginger Cook Retreat, both Ginger Cook and Silver Bay are on Lake George. The Camp Ginger Cook Retreat takes place the second week of school, and it's our welcoming to the school year, it's our welcoming, it's, you know, creating the focus for the school year, it's welcoming all the new members. Kirsten mentioned, two new teachers this year, we'll have two new students transferring in in the upperclass, and obviously 30 new freshmen. And the kids who have been to Ginger Cook, the kids who are veterans, are going to reach out to these kids and really make this a warm and exciting way to start the school year. Silver Bay is our closure, it's the end of the school year, it's our goodbye to our seniors, it's four years of ups and downs and ins and outs with them, it's competitions between the classes, but it's good-natured, and it's, you know, guest lecturers and workshops as well. So it's an incredibly nice way to end our school year.
Okay, it's important to realize that all of these field trips and retreats are completely self-funded by the lab school parents, and we obviously want them to know before they join that there is a cost to all these trips, although, as Steve mentioned, they are not mandatory. We certainly encourage the kids to go on all the trips because of the community that it does build, but they're not mandatory. So for the trips that do happen each year, the cost is approximately, if you add it all up, about $1,500, and that would be without any fundraising. They have a lot of different fundraising opportunities, but if they didn't take advantage of any of them, it'd be about $1,500. They only have one opportunity to go to Florida, either their junior or their senior year, and the Florida trip is approximately $3,000. And that's all that, that slide, that's that slide. Sorry.
So when we get to this point with the presentation with the students, they're offering, again, they're social creatures in middle school, and that's probably their biggest concern while they're sitting in that audience, is what kind of risk am I taking by joining this program, and what types of students are in there? Probably 12 or so years ago, I would have told you, we did have a cookie cutter program. We had a lot of similar kids in the program, and then we took in 60 freshmen in one year, and the bubble burst, and we all of a sudden started to see, we had the captain of the football team within that first two years after that, taking that bubble. We have athletes from every team, we have teachers, I coach two sports, we have several teachers who coach and are advisors of programs. We have, obviously, the music thing locked down, our kids are involved with all the productions here at school musically and with the theater. Club leaders, the editor of the school newspaper last year was a lab schooler, every one of these clubs and all of the clubs that are offered here, our students are after school moving in and out of those programs as well. The one, the other thing I like to do is, I sit down with the seniors. When we go and do this down at the eighth grade, we do bring students, so it's not us really talking, we think it connects better with the students to hear it from other students. So they go down and they talk to the students, and I have my senior sit down and just kind of reflect on their time in the program, and why did you ultimately choose to join the lab school? And we were talking earlier today, we said, there's a lot of reasons we choose to stay in this program, and so just quickly, the projects and the research, all you can read, you don't need me to read you. My mom. My mom made me too. So some common mission conceptions.
So I'm actually the senior member of the lab school, just in terms of being in at the longest, not by age. So I've heard pretty much all the misconceptions of the lab school, from, we wear lab coats to classes, to the lab school's in the basement of the building, you know, last year, we just showed up and everybody got an iPad for free, to we give all the students hugs every morning when we see them, and that's not true, we don't do that. But these are some of the common misconceptions. So lab school students do not graduate on time, that's simply not true, 100% of lab schoolers graduate on time. Lab school is only for really smart or really weak students. Clearly, as a teacher in the program, I can tell you that's not the case. Our classes are made up of all different types of kids. We have students that would have been on the AP track, we have some kids that would have been in some of the perhaps Excel classes, all different types, and it's very hard to say that lab school is meant for one or the other. If they're willing to work, it's a program for them. Lab school students do little or no work. Lab school students do just as much work as traditional school students, and I think a lot of times their peers forget about the fact that they have the additional requirements of the 20-week process. I don't know how many of them would want to write a thesis-based research paper and then have to give a presentation. And then also, as a teacher, both in the lab school and outside, I know that I give just as much homework to my lab school kids as my traditional school kids. And then I think we already kind of addressed, lab school students are isolated from traditional And then I think we already kind of addressed, lab school students are isolated from traditional school friends. So as we showed before, they have many opportunities. And as I said before, our room has the collapsible wall, and I know typically at the end of the day, we kind of put the wall down and have kids coming in and out. And a lot of times, we see the lab school kids, you know, coming in oftentimes with their traditional school friends, so.
And then finally, we'd like to show the families, this was a suggestion from a less Loomis way back when, was that we needed to make it a little bit clearer for students who are about to sign up for this lottery, what exactly they were getting into and what kind of attributes they should either have or aspire to have. You know, this would be, you're an incredible eighth grader, if they had all these things under their belt by eighth grade. But again, if they're not, if they know, for example, just, you know, I'm not a risk taker in a sense, and risk taker isn't jumping out of a parachute necessarily, but, you know, willing to stand up in front of a board of examiners, if they know that's not going to be in them and something they're never going to want, it may be a struggle for them to be in lab school. Like I said earlier, we're no better than any other path that goes through the school. It's just a different path. And when you're choosing that path, you want to make sure you know what you're getting into. So with that, again, a large thank you for the time. I know it's a summer, beautiful summer night. And an open invitation again to any and all of our events throughout the school year. If you go to the district webpage, I do these futures updates. The students videotape me, each month, I let you know, almost biweekly now, what's going on in the program. But my email address is there and my phone number, and we'd love to see you in our classrooms or at our events. And with that, any questions or discussion?
Can I ask a question? That was terrific. I'm a big fan of the lab school and tried very, very intently to get both of my high school students interested, and neither one would. And I'm finding that one of the most, and, you know, I'm a pretty engaged parent with my kids, but what I'm finding is the information that they take the most seriously is from the upperclassmen who are telling them, do not take this class because it's very hard, or take this, or whatnot. I'm just wondering, have you thought about, because eighth grade, I feel like these eighth graders really don't know what's ahead in the high school generally. And even for my second kid coming into the high school, I don't think, even though he had a sister in the high school, he really knew much about the lab school, other than some of the misconceptions that you've identified. But there are others also that aren't positive ones. And I'm just wondering, given those two dynamics, you know, the idea of using a little more sort of ambassadors of folks that actually could spend a little more time at the middle school level to sort of, you know, dispel the myths and kind of get some of these kids that aren't opting in, and believe me, I'd be the one where the mother made them because, you know, but I think it's a great sort of holistic kind of way to approach the high school experience and develop lots of different skills. So I'm just wondering, have you thought through any new bells and whistles to engage at that middle school level?
We are always looking for new ways. You know, one of the weird parts of the animal is you finally reach students when they graduate. They finally, like, our students will come in who in eighth grade were like, no way, no way, and then their friend gets in. They're hanging around in our room for four years going, I wish I put my name on the list. And then they graduate, and then we have a whole new crew that we need to educate. But yeah, we're definitely, I mean, we do go down in December, like I said, we go down and address the entire eighth grade in one shot. I mean, it would be ideal to be able to get them in smaller groups, but we also don't want to take away too much class time from those eighth grade instructors. You know, and we do an evening open house in January for eighth grade families. And then we also are here for the transition night, but certainly any other ways to knock down the rumors. And we do it at all turns, we're trying to educate people. And again, that's why we ended up here tonight, we figured new faces, or it's been some time since people started, people have moved over.
That was terrific.
Thank you.
Steve, just with what Joanne was saying, when you do do the conferences or whatever you want to call them, to the school, the whole eighth graders, do you bring students in to help with that?
Yes, yeah, that, everything we just did, they do that. I really just introduce them at the beginning. Each one of the students from the lab school will introduce themselves and let the students know, like, I'm on the track team, I'm in the chess club, or whatever it is they do. So, and that way, that, like I said, we like to have them do that because then the eighth grade students in there can kind of see themselves maybe in a few years.
Thank you, Steve. That was a great presentation. I have a question about the remediation because oftentimes I hear from high school students that, in the regular school, that they don't feel it's fair that the lab school students get to have a do-over. And especially when it comes to the National Honor Society, that because there's so many lab school students who end up in that because of the remediation process. So I wondered how you would address that to somebody in the regular high school?
I guess I would give it a two-part answer. The first thing I would say is that the students you're referring to that got into the Honor Society, I would, if we went back and checked our records, I would imagine they didn't avail themselves. They were strong students that got into the Honor Society, you know. But to go back to where we, the screen, it's a philosophy of education. Research bears it out, that mastery of learning, and this is our tool of getting there. Our goal is that a student walks away from the program, understanding the material we covered for four years and really owning it as they go on to that next stage in their life. And like I said, there's bodies of research that support remediation. It was a choice that those initial committee that put the program together to include it as part of that program. So in terms of, I mean, we have never been, it's apples and oranges, we don't, I've never given a presentation where I compare myself. I've already said tonight several times, we are no better, we are different. It is a different approach. It's a different philosophical and educational approach, and in that approach, we use remediation.
The other thing is that within the GPA are the electives, phys ed, which are, they would never be remediated. And also, their 20-week grades and 40-week grades are part of the GPA as well, and they are not remediated. So those are pretty major grades that also get incorporated. So those are pretty heavy deciding factors. So chances are, if a student has the kind of GPA that would get them into National Honor Society, it's pretty well-deserved, is what I would say to them.
Yeah, I would just piggyback that. My going back kind of, my experience with the remediation, my 14 years has tended to be the student who, in the example I gave earlier, just did not get it, just did not understand the green light at all. And as a student who's coming in after school or during a free period and meeting with me, and we're going over it again, and they're revisiting it and taking a second assessment, but those, the high flyers are going to fly wherever you put them. Your National Honor Society students are in an AP class, in a lab school, those students tend to fly wherever you put them.
Why is your program not geared toward taking the Regents every year in math and taking biochem, physics, all the regions? Why isn't it?
Because it would take away from the enrichment days, we become more of a test prep, you know, curriculum. And that, again, was from the very beginning, not the intent of the program, not the type of student or family they wanted to attract to the program. Like Kirsten mentioned, we do meet all the New York State requirements for any student who goes through the traditional high school to graduate. We're not shirking any of that. But in terms of taking the advanced Regents exam, we've had students do that on their own. We've had students go and take those, you know, take some of the AP electives on their own. Like I said, those high flyers will find their way, and they have a way to challenge themselves within our program while not leaving a student. I think we would damage the program. I think you would take in only a certain type of student. We'd be back to where I was saying, cookie cutter, we'd be going the other way. I think if you say, everybody has to have the advanced diploma, we're going to leave a kid who may fall through the cracks. And one of the original foundations of the program was, let's catch those kids who may fall through the crack. And if you take a path away from them because of an exam or a Regents exam, I would, you know, again, that wouldn't be my choice. And the path does exist for them here at the high school if they wanted to do that. Yes?
Do you keep part of the students when they drop, they leave the lab school?
And I've been wanting, actually, see records for years, for all of our students who graduate to see where they are four years, eight years, 10 years, or whatever. And for some reason, nobody seems to be able to compile that information. And I thought maybe in the small, maybe you can a little bit more easily, but I would like to see it for the whole program.
Just real quick, school districts can get that information. I will tell you, in my 17 years as administrator, someone's always asked that question. It's available. You have to pay to get the best, most accurate information. The reason why you have to pay for it is the school doesn't have the resources to be able to go out and track somebody down of where they are. Companies will go out and find where tax returns, student names, searches, and try to send out and get survey information to get the most accurate information. The quickest way for schools to maybe get something is if during the P-16 years, the 16 does an exit survey at the college level to help us know, did the student graduate? Are they planning on entering the workforce and so forth? It's a matter of resources and the ability to do it and going to the right source to get the most accurate information. However, I agree, with lab school, it's probably a little easier on a small segment just because there's such a connectivity to the students that the family basis of the lab school can probably go out and track those kids down relatively quickly.
And we did.
Four to five years out.
Well, what we did, and it's, I'll preface, it's not scientific anyway, but we had our 20th, and I thank those who were able to attend that night. We started a Facebook group for our alumni, and we had 289 alumni join the Facebook group. And then after they had all joined, I thought, wow, kind of interesting, where are these? I don't know some of them, they were before my time. So we put five questions out there for them all, and just to see every one of them. I mean, one of the kids actually joked, I can't believe it's six years later and Mr. Smith's giving me homework and I'm still doing it, you know? So, again, it wasn't scientific, but it was certainly, you could see our fingerprints on where they'd gone. They all were answering things that, you know, I was able to, you know, do this research study in England with the re-bio just because I, you know, caught the fever on the field trip in 11th grade, those kind of things. And so that, I could print that all out for the board, I, you know, certainly could make that available if you, you know, Jim Naring was here for the 20th, and I was sharing that with him, and it's certainly not test scores, but it's data.
Or we could just be friends with you on Facebook and read it ourselves.
Sure. You can join the alumni group, yeah, if you wanted to. Your request to join the lab school alumni group, you can read all the feedback from those students, you know, going back to that first graduating class.
And see, I think that's important because you have the 20th anniversary. One of the things is when you're at 25 per class, if you use that as an average, you have roughly about, I think it's 500 graduates at this point. But if you have 229 alumni, you already have close to a 50% response rate.
Well, it's probably more because first year, the first year was only 10th, 11th, and then it was 10th, 11th, 12th.
So it's a little under. You have a better response rate right now through Facebook than probably what some of the companies would get. And we paid for it.
I'd just welcome the opportunity to come in and sit in classes. I know some of us have gone in. Appreciate that, and encourage folks who the schedules allow, to try to do that from time to time. I also would love to get a notice of when the community service initiative report out by the seniors, is it going to happen? The odds of me checking your website is like zero. If you could kind of make mental note, let the board know, I'd love to see those reports out.
We'd love to have you come see it. It's a great day.
He never used the word, the term project-based learning. And originally, that was what...
I guess I would go back to the answer about why we wouldn't want to go to just a test-only curriculum, or getting prepared for tests only, because so much of what she does, when Kirsten talked about my English class, yes, I cover all the texts that my colleagues do in the English department, but I have a lot of projects, for example, in the things they carry unit. There is no film version of the things they carry. So our, my juniors are put in small groups and they become a production company. They have to do a 30-second trailer for the movie, they have to do a movie poster, they have to write narratives about why they made the choices for actors they would cast as the characters in the book. And so, again, it's not a unit test, it's a unit project. And so that, you're right, was from the very beginning, was the intent that our students would do projects.
Across disciplines.
Across disciplines, yep. You know, Jason Greco and I are going to be teaching Grapes of Wrath this year, and he'll do the social studies, I'll do literature, we'll bring classes together, it becomes a schedule. Again, this is that lab school uniqueness, is he has the juniors when I have the seniors, so we can open up that wall and have more in one room for a big group discussion about the Grapes of Wrath and do some project-based assessment with it.
I have a couple of questions and comments. I really liked the idea that Community Day, although you mentioned it's every other week or every two weeks. How does that impact their non-lab school classes that they take the electives and the PE and whatnot?
Sure. I'll have to bow down to our scheduling guru. She makes sure, and we're about to do it in the next two weeks, that you, the students will still go to any traditional school class, band, PE, orchestra, or whatever, they don't miss those classes on enrichment days. So we make sure, and it's an arduous process for Kirsten, but she makes sure, if you're in my research class, that you're free the two periods that I'm running the research class and you're not conflicting. The only conflict maybe would be with the study hall. We usually communicate with the study hall teacher, say, would you have a problem if they came to research class on this Monday? And we haven't had a problem with that, as long as we communicate it ahead of time.
And then just any shared ideas that you've come up with through the year, that, any examples of where you might have shared with the high school at large that have worked well in the lab school that maybe would transform over to the regular high school?
I know in my department, I've shared quite a few times lessons that we've done the project-based stuff. I do a project called Delivering a Message, where a student or two students have to get in front of the room and deliver a message without saying a word, they can't speak. And I deliver that to my colleagues, and I know a bunch of the English department have been, put their own little touches on it and use that. With the research process, certainly, we've been, you know, our brain's been picked both by the social studies department and the English department. I do think, I mean, the commissioner just last year said he'd like to see every New York City student graduate doing a research paper. So I do think that, you know, we're ahead of the curve in that in preparing our students, but, you know, we have those materials available for our colleagues to share. And I think, although the iPad initiative is not a lab school, it's being used by the lab school, I do think eventually, as we're feeling that process out, you know, Mike Mitchell and I just last week attended an online Common Core live streaming conference on how to use Edmodo in the classroom on the iPads. I could see a time when we'll be able to pay that forward to our colleagues, but we're still learning it. And I think it was very wise from whomever behind the scenes decided, let's put this out in small little drafts and see how it works first. But I could definitely see where we could, you know, share that with our colleagues.
Yeah, I think this year will be an example of that as we're expanding the pilot to some AP programs with it. And I know the AP teachers will be talking with the lab school teachers for fundamental uses, integration, as well, as we start to go across the traditional as well as the lab school with that program. In all, it's really trying to prepare for online assessment too for us.
And then you also mentioned that this past year, I believe you had close to 100 students, 90-some students have applied through the lottery. Is that historically the number we have?
It has been, yeah. This is, I'm coming into my ninth year as coordinator, and I would say for the last decade, we've been right around 90 to 100 in each of the draws.
Then, and a follow-up question to that then would be, what about if we were to expand it to 60 students at grade level? What do you, what impact do you see at that?
Well, no.
I mean, if it seems to be an option or a path that 90-some students are looking for and are fully educated about what option...
You're asking a question, I get this question in every one of the open houses, and I can say that this team of eight teachers is fully on board with the lab school and believes in it whole, with all of our hearts. So if they wanted to grow it, the only thing is growing it kind of can also take away from what it is, you know, and she's referencing, the year we had 60 freshmen, it's hard to make a personal connection with all 60 of them, even by the time they graduate, when the program's that large. But I could see, you know, if they had a, call it whatever you want, a second lab school or a second program path, and maybe it's geared a little bit different. It's, you know, ours is maybe humanities-based and one science or tech-based. I could see, and we would definitely be willing to share our insights if that were to come about.
I think that also brings up a point that we have to be careful on stressing our resources just because we've been downsizing, downsizing, we're hoping at the bottom. Hopefully, we'll be able to pull out, and as a superintendent, I think as a board, we'll be able to hopefully grow in the future if potentially possible, I just don't know yet. It's cautious, it's cautious optimism. But the coordination of the lab school takes a tremendous amount of time, and that's where it's been some administrative cuts. That, I've talked to Scott Landry, and this year, we will be giving some more administrative support to the lab school, as I believe everybody should have some accountability or skin in the game. Heather was wonderful and stepped right up and volunteered, that she will be the direct liaison for the lab school to the high school administration as well as to the district administration. So where Scott has the whole school, he also has the lab school. He also has somebody to concentrate on this version of the school because it's really a school within a school. And also, it provides our administrative leadership with leadership opportunities that they take direct oversight and accountability for. And the tools and resources are there for Heather as well to add a little bit of support on the administrative side back to lab school. So if that's something to look at, those are some of the things to think about as we continue to look at possible growth opportunities.
Any other questions, Lynn?
Kirsten and Steve, thank you very much, appreciate it.
I gotta see it.
Yes, okay.
Okay, Agenda Item 9. At this point, we'll recognize any visitors that have anything to comment on about an agenda item. Have any comments? All right. Item 10, Finance. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items, A through J. Do you have a motion? That's a first and a second. Any discussion?
Oh, go ahead, Lynn.
No, well, actually, I should've asked earlier about the tax rate and stuff. I was kinda surprised that, you know, I know people do read their assessments or whatever, but I thought that the economy was picking up again and from being at a low, I figured that the assessed valuation of the town within the school district, obviously, would have risen. So I was kinda surprised that it didn't.
It did rise from last year to this year, but the decline that I mentioned was a decline from its high back in May. It dropped down from that May figure, so it's still higher than last year. It was up about $2 million for the town of Bethlehem, even though it dropped from that May valuation date.
Based on what her projections were? That's really based on your projections dropped.
So it was here last year, it increased up to here based on May, and then slid back a little bit now. So again, still higher than last year, but lower than it was based on the May values.
Okay, so I guess the economy is improving slowly, I guess that's the way to interpret that.
Slow, but improvement, I'll take it.
It's a little engine going up a steep hill.
Yeah.
Trimi, did you have something?
I have some questions about the BOSI's contract and contracts, and I wasn't able to ask them in the executive session. There's just, some of them are just minor. I think it's one of the first times I remember going through it in such detail. A general question is, I realize it's billed by quantity slash share per item. Are the quantity slash shares based on an estimate of the number of units needed? Or how do you get to the, how do you decide the quantity slash share for each item?
These are services that are purchased throughout multiple different departments within the school. It could be instructional program, it could be technology-based. So each department basically places their order for what it is that they expect to need. That's all reviewed internally, and then we agree on what quantity of services to purchase. So this report that you're looking at includes the approved quantities.
Based on the estimates.
Based on those estimates, yes.
And the good part is, at the end of the year, if we did not use those quantities, there's a reconcile report with your AS7s that will help so that sometimes there's a rebate back to the district because you did not use it. But if you over-expended, there's also a bill at the end of the year that you also have to pay.
Sometimes it happens before the end of the year, depends on what the nature of the services.
Some of it's based on our WADA, you know, and some is based on the number of districts that are involved in sharing the service. So the more people who engage in the service, obviously, it's less expensive.
Right, the cost per unit goes down. I just wanna know if it was an estimate and what happened if we estimated high or low. Just a couple of the items, the teacher for visually impaired students has gone up significantly. I was just wondering if there was, do we have more students who are visually impaired anticipating, okay? Okay, whatever she said. I'm not aware of my hearing aids.
It increased quite a bit.
Okay, good, thank you. And then there are some on software licensing, hardware purchase. I always think those are all the tech costs in anticipation of just needs or?
Potentially, as in anticipation as well as our costs are starting to increase as the state starts to move some of its requirements for APPR reporting and so forth.
I saw that. And then there's a lot related to testing services. So I, I was.
Topic of the year.
I realize Jody's not here, so I realize most of the, some of these have been adjusted and some of them have not. But are you able to comment or should I ask that of Jody?
If you can send that question to me, I'll get Jody to comment in the update, and then we can bring it up for the next meeting. But a lot of the items in regards to testing is exactly what's facing the districts across the state. Is this is an unfunded mandate that has been transferred down to the local level. Our testing cost budgets may be an estimate, but they can be under-inflated because of the sheer quantity and volume of requirements now. And if you read the eclipse, as well as, I think, a letter that's coming out from the state, our costs for assessments are going to double in less than a year with no additional aid from the state or state ed, and it's automatically going to be taken from our aid right off the bat. In other words, right now, it costs on average about $13.90 to test a student with the Regents, or the three through eight. When we switch to Park, which is where the state is going, it'll cost $30 per student. So there is no assistance, we must cover that cost.
It'll look like for each test is a fee per student.
And the more we can do it in BOSIs, if possible, is probably gonna be advantageous because at least we'll see some recoup on the aid.
Okay, great, those are my questions.
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Lynn, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I was just.
We were just voting, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
So that was a yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, any abstentions that carries? Thank you.
That was with the tax rate, correct?
That was, well, it was A through J. We did.
Yes, the warrants and the tax rate.
Please remember, before you leave, all board members will have to sign the tax warrant.
And open office for?
Item 11, Professional Service. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following instructional staff actions, Items A through Z. Is there a motion?
Second.
That's a second. Any discussion?
Just, I know that I emailed this question to Jody and she didn't answer it, but just in case the public knows, it looks like there is a teacher taking a part-time sabbatical. And then, because you'll see that she's approved for, I think it's a?
Point 6, point 4.
Wait, I'm trying to remember, is it a?
Mentor for new teacher.
Mentoring.
Mentoring, right. So Val Falco is the person involved. So it looks like she's teaching but also taking a sabbatical and also serving as a mentor, just so in case people saw the names popping up several times.
And I believe we had already previously approved that sabbatical.
Yes, that is a contract.
She's actually going right into the classrooms, right?
This will be a literary, sort of literary coaching sabbatical in district, which we receive direct benefit with our teachers, especially at the third grade level. In addition, this is a contractual item. It's just approval for the board, but we're obligated by contract to make sure that we move forward. However, the mentorship, because both teachers will be in the same room with the individual students at hand, it would obviously make sense that the teacher of record, which would be Miss Falco, would also serve as the mentor so that there's shared time and team coordination.
I have a question, too, just on Items C, with the continuing education, but those, that's self-supporting?
Just a thing I'm trying to get to.
I think it was on the list, and it was a thing that sounds totally self-supporting.
And then, what about, like, our own teachers that are teaching there, like, doing a class? Does that pay, get put on their salary, or is it a separate?
I'm not sure if that would, Judy.
It shouldn't.
It's separate?
Separate, second, yeah.
Well, it's a separate amount, but it's all combined in your W2s and in your reporting. It doesn't affect your credit.
But it's not in your base, it's a separate amount.
That's what I was asking.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions that carries? Item 12, Support Staff. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following Support Staff Action Items, A through L. Is there a motion? That's a first.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions that carries?
I have to mention, if you don't mind, you know, by Sam Robinson, I mean, he's had, what, 33 years in the district in the Transportation Department, and I remember one year for the opening day, Leslie was at asked him and actually, and a member of the, and a teacher also, to speak at opening day along with his speech, which I think everybody was glad to have someone else speak at the time. But he did such a great job, and he, you know, he's just, he was a trainer in the Transportation Department, and I think just, you know, a real valued employee. And I just think, you know, we're having someone really valuable retire. I know everyone has certain value, but I think, you know, he just kind of was at the top there.
Thank you. Action Item 13. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following correspondence, Action Items, A through E. Is there a motion?
So moved.
That's a first.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed, any abstentions that carries? Item 14, at this point, would, I'm not sure, it's, 14, recognition of any visitors who have a comment on any non-agenda item.
I never know what's an agenda item.
If it's on the agenda, it's an agenda item. And could you come up to the microphone, Phil? Okay, if you could just say your name.
Most of you know me, that I've been pretty supportive of the school district through some rookie years, through Clarksville blowing through the budget cap and things like that. But I think I said to you guys in an email, it's over. I think it's time for a sequester in the Bethlehem Central School District. I can't tell you how many people have told me that they're going to move out of Bethlehem because of taxes. It's not, although the town taxes are annoying, it's the school taxes. I'm particularly sensitive to this because I've paid off my mortgage, so now when I, the whole thing is taxes. And you always refer to the community has approved this. I'd like to see the language change. The community never has approved anything because the people that vote in the school board elections are a very small minority of the community. And I don't think the board has enough respect for those people. I think you forget about the taxpayers. We're not a bottomless pit, which I think we tend to be viewed as. So as I've told you all, I'm launching a new website, and I have an agenda. My agenda is to get more people who are not parents and teachers to vote in the school board election. Because it's time to really assess where you're gonna get this money from. I know all the faults of the state government and that sort of thing, and I agree with it. But the community keeps re-electing, so what are you gonna do about it? So that's gonna be the focus, and you gave me a great idea, Judy. I'm gonna launch my site on September 1st when the tax bills go out. So I do have a couple of questions, if I may. The first one is, is the selection of the new board member, going to be transparent? Are there minutes of those, of the decision? Is there any minutes, or is this another issue that's none of our business?
No, it was done tonight. We voted on the new board member tonight.
Okay. So there was no, how did you decide who was gonna, who you were gonna vote in tonight?
I believe we put it out on the website we interviewed. We asked people to.
I know, I'm talking about the discussion. What happened to the other 12 people? And the famous?
They weren't selected.
We interviewed all 12.
So the discussions involved in the selection are not public information?
No, they were done in executive session.
Even though the board, even though the board member is not an employee, so how, how does that work?
Still an officer or personnel issue because they could be charged under Board or State Officers law, which they are a public officer, so they qualify under Public Officers law. And therefore, they're entitled, under legal advice, that it could be and was done in executive session. No different than we provide that courtesy to any member of the community.
I'm not the only one that's asking that question.
I understand, Phil. That's why it was explained in open process, three board meetings.
Okay, my other question is, and I asked this question sometime before, is how many signatures do you need to put an item on the ballot for the school board election?
I believe you don't get to put anything on the ballot without the board's authorization. I think we went through that beforehand.
So I could get 1,000 signatures on something?
And the board still has the final say on putting something forward in a resolution. Anything brought before the board would still go through the board and then legal muster. Usually, I believe the rule is 10% minimum of the last board count, I think. I'd have to check, and if you'd be so kind, it's 5%? We'll still check just to confirm, just give Judy a call, and I'm sure she.
But the board doesn't wanna do it, it's not gonna?
Well, it depends. I mean, we'd still have to seek legal consult, and I would advise the board to do just that.
And Phil, I, we always encourage the public to come out and vote. We, if we could come up with better ideas of how to get the public engaged, we're all for it.
I didn't say that was your fault.
No, but I'm, if there's any way we can get the public to be more engaged, but it is the public who has spoken who determines the budget. It's actually their only budget that they can speak on.
Yeah, if I may, it's just like, I think, Phil, you bring up an interesting point. I think you know, over my two budget votes here, I've tried to get everybody out, and I've gotten pretty much the largest totals ever, at least. But what happens is, no matter what part of the community comes out for that election, whether it's favorable to passing or not favorable to passing, the board represents whatever that decision is. So there are times where, I mean, even in our bond issue, there was an unfavorable vote. The board represented that part of the vote as well and accepted that from the community members that made that decision. So unfortunately, we're limited, we're open whenever they, anybody comes out, but we're also limited to who comes out, too.
I will say, too, I think we've always encouraged the widest group of the community to come out and consider candidacy because I think the board is open to all different perspectives, and it's just a matter of getting people to run and engage in the process, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, future meetings and events. We have, our next board meeting is September 3rd, which is a Tuesday. Normally, we meet on Wednesday, but because of Wednesday being the eve of the Jewish holiday, we've moved that to Tuesday. Then Wednesday, September 18th, and then Wednesday, October 2nd. Any other items, anybody can think of? Okay. Motion to adjourn, first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
That carries, thank you.
Please stay around.